Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the work session for Monday, October 3rd, 2022. You may have noticed it is not the second Monday of the month. It is the first Monday of the month. So, welcome to Blade Tober. We did have to change the meeting date from next week to today, given some professional development that members of the council will be attending next week with the Maryland Municipal League's Fall Conference. So, again, thank you to those who joined. The first item is to call the meeting to order, and we are now called to order. We'll move forward with the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I saw move.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McBride. Any discussion, corrections, or edits? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you. The next item is the approval of the September 12th work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Brown. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any discussion, corrections, or edits? I did just want to ask because it came up in a community forum, the updates regarding the Bladensburg High School track and field, and wanted to see if the council would be open to just adding and the notes that I shared from the last meeting where I gave the status updates in terms of what percentage complete the various projects were. I can send that writing to Mr. Charnovich, but again, I went back to the recording last night from the meeting and just wanted to make sure the details were in there because there's alumni from the high school who are starting to raise a ruckus because the project is incomplete, the information is not getting out to the community. And so just want to make sure in our records that it is reflected that we got the information, we shared it with the community, and that way they have it in writing. So, if you all don't mind, I was just going to ask if we could include that language, and I'll literally copy and paste what I read to you all during the meeting and then note, send it to Mr. Charnovich following the meeting, so he can just drop that in there. But that was the only edit I wanted to ask for. And no other. So with that, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some more.
I'm sorry, we've moved and seconded.
Secondly.
Properly seconded, and I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. So again, Mr. Charnovich, I have the language that I read. I'm just going to forward that to you. I'm going to pay attention now, but I'll do it after the meeting.
Sounds good, Mayor. Thank you very much. I'll look for that.
Perfect. Thank you. So, item number four is appearances. And at the prior council meeting, we discussed rent stabilization programs to a small degree, but given some of the challenges that our residents are having where they're going from steady rent amounts to having percentage increases that are upwards of 20, 25, 30%. And while that may not sound like a big number, if your monthly income is only $2,000 a month, say you're on a fixed retirement income, and you're used to paying $900, jumping up $300-ish dollars is a significant portion of your income. And while that rental is going up, your income is not, even with CPIU adjustments, it's not keeping pace. And so, members of the council have been contacted by various members in the community because this is a concern, and they have tried to work with their property management company and don't seem to be getting favorable responses initially. And so as a council, we did briefly discuss this last month in terms of what can the town council do to, to help, you know, from a legislative perspective? And one of the things that came up was certainly working through PG CMA and leveraging the power and numbers. So ideally, if we establish this as a legislative priority through PG CMA, then we're all speaking with one voice to the county, asking for some support with just saying, let's set some reasonable metrics in place so we're not gouging our residents and driving out good people in our community who've been wonderful neighbors, you know, wonderful tenants. And so to help set the stage in the council packet, the legislation that we received from our counsel, our legal counsel, Mrs. Sue Ellen Ferguson is here. This is the ordinance from the city of College Park. And then we were also provided with legislation from the city of Tacoma Park. And so I just want to turn it over to Mrs. Ferguson to just explain to the community exactly what rent stabilization programs are. And then based on her experience in working with other communities, just some examples of things that they did in order to establish these programs. And we don't want the rosy view because we understand one of our municipalities in the county did go down this road and they were sued. And so there can be financial impact, you know, when you have those kinds of situations happen. And so we're not looking to make a decision tonight. We just want to understand the big picture, the things we need to consider, be educated on all of those things and how the process works. And again, that way, hopefully, we can come to agreement with working with other municipalities to really push for some support on the county level and ultimately the state level with establishing some standards here. So, Sue Ellen, sorry for the wordy preamble, but over to you.
It's good to see everybody. It's been a long time.
You too.
Except for the chief. So, in any event, it's true. I was part of College Park's effort to write a rent stabilization law. And they had a very organized set of landlords. And they're, the folks that they were focusing on were the single-family homes rentals, not all renters. And so theirs would be different from what you're talking or thinking about. But the general proposition that the city was sued over was whether or not they had stated a public purpose that was going to be fulfilled or served by adopting rent stabilization. And because without that, the city wasn't going to be able to adopt the law. And so we anticipated in the beginning that there would be a lawsuit. And so when drafting the law, the public purpose was very clearly voted on by council and very clearly considered by an outside expert. Enter Ben Basu, and I don't know if you've dealt with Dr. Basu. He actually speaks at MML every now and then. And he was the expert witness for the city, who then looked at, as an economist, looked at what the city wanted to accomplish and said that the law that they were adopting would give effect to that. So once, once that's established, then when you go to court, the court is not able to say, well, I would have done this differently. They have to find out, find one, whether or not a city can actually exercise rent stabilization authority. And they found that in the Court of Appeals level that yes, they can. And in fact, this is the report, most recent reported case establishing that right, which is, I think, 10 years ago now or something. And then, and then the second was, did the municipality state a public purpose that is served by adopting the law? And because the city had the expert opinion to support what it did, the court said, we will not interfere with that. And so the city's right to have rent stabilization was confirmed. I believe Tacoma Park also got sued when they adopted theirs years and years, decades ago. They had theirs for decades. And in fact, when the city was going to adopt a law, the city of College Park, we met a couple of times with Tacoma Park to go over what they had done and the forms they used, because it's a form-heavy thing. You set a baseline for everybody because you can't make them retrench usually. But you can make them prove up why they need increases going forward. And that's what the College Park law did, but only for single-family homes, because those were the ones that they thought were the most, their main purpose frankly, was to encourage people who own single-family homes not to go into the rental business. And they made no bones about it. They said, you know, we need balance in these neighborhoods. And what was happening there was that investors were coming in and buying up single-family homes for a lot more money than a family could pay for them, and then renting them to students. And those neighborhoods weren't built with the idea of having at least five different people in each house on the block. And so it was overwhelming and rentals, rental after rental after rental. And so they came right out and said that. That's part of our purpose here is to control the balance of who's in our neighborhoods. And the court said, that's okay. And so your purpose would be more of the traditional type, which is to try to control pricing and link it in some way to actual cost of increased costs with a reasonable profit on top of it. I think probably what you're getting from these landlords is a reaction, and I'm assuming these are large multifamily buildings that are doing this.
Yeah.
They are. Okay. They are very well represented by a lobbying group. And probably do have the wherewithal to see you if you were to adopt this law. And probably what they're doing is right now is recouping the fact that during the pandemic, some people took advantage of not being able to, not having to pay their rents and not being able to be evicted and didn't pay them. And then, you know, are kind of judgment-proof. So, you know, they lost money doing that. The, there are ways to help cushion, I think, some of these effects. You have ARCA monies. And people who can show that they have been hurt by the pandemic can be given grants to help with their housing, as could under the CARES Act, I believe. So there are ways to do that. If you, if you're using, you know, up to, what is it, $10 million? You don't really have to prove up anything to the federal government, except that you used it for a public purpose. You know, it's not a detailed accounting, and I'm sure Vito knows all about that at this point. So it's not as if you have to have a specific category that fits, that you have to prove you matched. Like some of the bigger governments that got more money than $10 million. So you could use that as a fund to help people who are having difficulty getting to their rent every month. The buildup to rent stabilization, as I said, is expensive. If you're talking about multifamily high rises, they're well enough funded that they can sue you. If they sue you for damages, then legit will defend you. And in College Park's case, Legit did defend them. And so it became something that your insurance carrier handled. It depends on how the case comes in as to whether there's damages and what Legit's willing to do also. I think they've been streamlining. They are handling more things these days for you. And it's always good to ask. But on the other hand, recently, I had to do, College Park got sued on a zoning matter, and they asked me to handle it because they didn't have anybody that really specialized in doing zoning work. So they can bring in outside counsel. When College Park was sued, I asked Legit to bring in outside counsel because they were being sued by, the city was being sued by somebody who was very well-known in the Courts of Appeal. And I thought that we were not going to stand a great chance unless we got somebody who had kind of equal stature with that. And in fact, the city did win, and in part, that was because of that. So you have to decide what program you're going to adopt. And College Park's is a, you know, hard to slog through. You can see that it's very city-specific. And yours would look different because you have high rises that you're mainly looking at. And the city had different kinds of buildings. They had single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes up to quadruplexes, and that's where they stopped. You would be really dealing with just the multifamilies, I assume. And so you have to figure out a way to set your baseline, and you also have to have somebody who will administer this for you. Because what happens is you set a limit. And then if they want to exceed that limit, they have to file and show you why, how costs have increased and what it is they are financing by, with this increase. Plus, they're still allowed a reasonable rate of return. If you don't allow them that, then it's a confiscation, and you can't do that. You know, DC has had a rent control, and we prefer not to call it control. It's rent stabilization because that's really what you're doing. You're trying to make it so it just doesn't keep shooting up all the time. DC's had it for years and years. So it, and Maryland has confirmed that you can do it twice now. So I don't see that changing. It's just, who do you want to control and how are you going to administer that so it's done fairly? College Park had to put together a rent stabilization board, and you can see in that law how they created that to decide cases when landlords came in and said, I want to raise the rents. And this is why. But mainly, what they had trouble with is that you all know that if you have more than 10% of your population that ignores a law, it's almost impossible to enforce it. And if your landlords don't go by this law, then you have to start making them. And showing that they're not complying can be hard. So it depends on how what aggressive and adversarial they are. Mostly corporations don't start out that way and don't want to start out with you that way. And so my suggestion is that you try to put together some kind of, I don't know, conference with the, the big owners to get an explanation of why you're getting these kinds of complaints. Is it mostly, is it primarily your senior citizen population? And maybe there's a way that they can assist with that. You know, it just, it depends. And you can ask for their consideration so that you don't have to go the next step. And you can say, you've been asked to do this or to consider it, and you know that it would be a big change for them, and it would be a big change for you. And so before doing that, you wanted to search out maybe some way of making an agreement with them. Kind of, you know, have a summit with them and say, this is the problem that we're dealing with. The people are looking to us as the government to resolve it. You know, we can adopt rent stabilization, but again, that's a big change for everybody, and we'd like to see if there's something short of that that we could arrange. It could be that they come to people and say, okay, well, we did just increase, and it's because of these reasons, and there are, I'm sure, some. But we're not going to increase for the next number of years. So that you would know possibly that if you helped out for the first couple, maybe that the, the weight would be less on the residents. I don't know why they're doing this. My guess is, is that the cost of most materials maintenance has gone up. The cost of salaries has gone up because a lot of people didn't return to the workforce. We have inflation, as you know. And, you know, they, they didn't, weren't able to collect money from folks for a couple of years. And I'm sure they had a significant, I'm sure, but I'm going to guess that they had a not insignificant percentage of people, and it wouldn't take much not paying and knowing they can't be evicted. So College Park tried to do that, but they tried to work with the landlords. And those landlords were not corporate landlords. They were by and large individuals, families who had made their money off of renting single-family homes for many years. And also newly, new on the scene investors who tended to be small investors who would buy these houses and then turn them into rentals. So you're dealing with a different group. It's a smaller group. But they might listen to reason because they really don't like rent stabilization. They hate it.
So Sue Ellen, I appreciate you walking us through the bigger picture, the impacts, what it took for these municipalities to get this program started, and again, for sharing the legislation that they enacted. I want to open it up to the council for questions, and I know I have a couple too. Because it just, to your point, it seems like we're better off at least trying to meet with them, not just one, but just broadly meet with the, the owners in the community to try to start this conversation and figure out how we can work together and not immediately go to, you know, trying to go down this road of a rent stabilization program in Bladensburg just yet. However, there's some challenges in the past, I recall. There was a law with the county. So for seniors, their rent could not be increased more frequently than, I think, every two years. And I'm not sure that that's still on the books, but that is something that I feel like as a legislative priority, we can just re-up that to our county council members and just see where it is, and if it's lying dormant, if that could be reenacted. And my understanding is there were also some county laws made with respect to the amount of increases and the frequency of those increases for multifamily housing. Are you familiar with either of those pieces of legislation?
But, you know, they would not be that difficult to find if they're still there. I know they used to have a landlord-tenant commission, which they don't have anymore. So I don't know how long that that governor on the rent lasted or if it's still there. Obviously, if it's still there and the rent increases that are being imposed are more than that, then you certainly want to get the county council, the county involved and the assistance of your county council member if that's available.
Okay, perfect. I made that note here. And then just wanted to ask, because I'm not sure if the other council members saw this, but while you had, and I'm thinking about College Park's legislation specifically. So they had the board that was established, and it consisted of members of the community. So I think it was two owners, you know, two renters, so that you had a broad group of voices. But there were some things in there where the property managers were required to present or report documentation on the amount of rental that they were charging per year for their units and provide that information to the city. College Park is much busier than us, so I'm imagining if we go down this road, we would have to think about additional staffing because you'd have to have a staff member who's dedicated to getting the reporting on a regular basis. And if the reporting is missing from, I don't know, James Corporation going after them to make sure they get it, and if they're not submitting things that are true and honest, and when the city audits, I've read that if they've reported bad information that, and it looks like it was intentional, there's fines and penalties, there's this whole administrative arm and process that goes along with it. And I'm just thinking with our current government structure, we would definitely need that internal capacity to have someone. But do you know for College Park, if they have a specific person who's dedicated to managing this process, or is it just like under their clerk, for example, or code enforcement?
To clarify, they no longer use this law.
Oh.
They stopped, and I'll explain that in a minute. When they were using the law, they did have staff liaison for this to the rent stabilization board. And the rent stabilization board did require a good bit of assistance to, to obtain the records and keep track of them. So yes, this is an administratively, it's a weight that you do. Somebody's got to be in the administration to handle that. You can't rely on volunteers to do all that. It won't work. College Park stopped using this because the landlords were so up in arms about it and so angry that they started just misbehaving in all sorts of other ways. And they put together a group to come to the city and say, we will work with you on this to be better. Because the city really wanted, as I said, wanted to limit the number of these houses in a neighborhood in part because of their really bad behaviors that were going on, because it's mostly students of crowding the houses and then having, you know, 300 people in the backyard at 2:00 AM kind of parties, that kind of thing, roaming around the streets. And they promised that they would make everybody behave better if the city would stop enforcing the law. Plus, as I said, most of the landlords ignored the law and were refusing to go by it. And so we had way more than your 10% non-compliance. And it was going to be a lift to get that. So the city decided to give that a try because they hated it so much. And as I said, you know, landlords do not want rent stabilization anywhere in their jurisdiction. It gives people ideas, they think, and they don't want that to spread. It's very hard to have a system that really works. And they don't want anybody else getting one. So that's what they think.
So Ellen, there's a question from Councilmember Brown. I want to get her in in case it's about this subject that you're on at the moment. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, it's about this.
I'm sorry about the, what she was saying about the, the owners getting together and, you know, not being compliant with it.
I want to know, what is the impact of not having zoning authority? So does, does the not having zoning authority, how does, how does that weigh?
You know, it's not a zoning matter, or College Park wouldn't have been able to do it either because they don't. So it's not that. It's regulation based on something other than the use that's being made of the property. So that does not limit you. Zoning, to a certain extent, applies because you can't have multifamily rentals unless you have a multifamily zone. But, you know, these buildings are already built, so
Right.
you know, they're, it's an accepted use. And, you know, you also get the pushback from landlords that it's making it very difficult for them with rent stabilization to make upgrades, to respond to resident complaints, that type of thing. You know, you'll hear a lot of that. So they generally will push back pretty hard on something like that. I could, in terms of what the county still has on the books, we can take a look and see pretty quickly whether that's still there. And if that in fact is, you would have to have the residents come in and show you what their rent was and what it is now, and show you that it's exceeding whatever limit had been placed. And it may be that there is a year-over-year increase that can happen.
And maybe according to the county regs.
Yeah. And it may be that they just, the landlords didn't take advantage of that for a couple of years, and then now are just jumping. I don't know, but it, the, the most sensible thing to do, if there's something that you can use with the county, to use it.
And I think that would strengthen what we talked about last time and trying to push this through PG CMA. So doing it across all 27 municipalities to the county, because they're strength in numbers. And it's certainly not an issue that's primarily affecting us. In the most egregious cases, we have a property manager who purchased a building in town. And upon the, I hate to say takeover, but upon the, the purchase, immediately started doing things like you have 30 days to renew your lease with 300 extra dollars tagged on there. And oh, by the way, now you have to pay utilities while utilities were previously included. And so that example that I used previously, sadly, was one of the eldest And so that example that I used previously, um sadly, was one of the eldest residents in that complex who ended up being displaced. She was basically homeless because this new management company came in and wanted to charge hundreds of dollars more, and she couldn't afford that. And I noticed in the legislation too, there was clear language about if you are increasing rents, you have to give at least two months notice, not as in this um example, and I won't say the resident's name, but I think she got thirty days or just above that. So I think you're right, uh, Ms. Ferguson, there's a lot here. Um, and just learning from less, well, taking, you know, insights from lessons learned from College Park. I'm not sure we need to go charging down the role of rent stabilization quite yet. Just do our homework. If you can help us track down that legislation from the county, both for senior rentals.
Phone, I'm I'm clear until six thirty.
Okay, yeah, if you can help us find that, that would be great. And then the county legislation as well, so we can circulate it to everyone here. And um, and in preparation for the next PG CMA meeting, be prepared to bring that up to the group. But council member blind, I just wanted to give you an opportunity if you had questions or council member McBride. Okay.
Uh, my guess is that for the lady that um sent you her information, that at some point she had moved over to month to month. And that's why she got thirty days notice, because if you have a month to month, um, then it is just month to month. And a lot of times that's what happens. You'll have a year long lease. And then it moves over to month to month. And mostly tenants like that, if they're not going to be long term, because then they can give notice and it's only thirty days notice they have to get.
Yeah, sadly, with this resident and a few others in the building, that was not the case. So it's, yeah, it's a mess.
Okay.
Yeah. So we are doing our best to help. I know um between council member Brown, she's um you know, been in a meeting with the residents, council member route, myself, we're really trying to help, like you said, as the government step in, getting helps from staff to try to right the ship, but um.
If there's an ongoing lease, then a buyer is going to have to honor that. Um, the terms on that until that the term goes away, because they generally speaking have acquired not only the benefits of the building, but the drawbacks of the building. So that is something I would push individually if she's not on a month to month.
Okay. That makes sense. Well, we appreciate you adjusting your schedule to join us. And I know I learned a lot. I hope everyone else uh benefited from just understanding what other municipalities have done. And uh, we'll definitely look out for the information uh if you're able to track that down, so we can reference that as we move forward.
Okay, I will, I will check now.
All right. Thank you again for joining us. It was great seeing you after many, many months. Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you. So we don't have any items under old business at this time, so we'll move right into new business items. The first item on the list, as many in the community know, we've been without a town administrator for a few months now. And um, appreciate Mr. Turnovich stepping in to serve as interim town administrator. But for his sanity, we do not want to burn him out. And there's a lot of projects that we have happening in town. And so just wanted to talk through with the council. The uh ability to move forward with a hiring firm to support our search for our next town administrator. And um, the proposals were shared with you, I believe, last Friday. And then there was also a summary, just breaking out the cost between each of the firms. And so with Baker Tilly, their proposal was twenty six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. They did provide a detailed um attachment. And basically, you'll notice um we had explored this back in twenty twenty one, but we didn't go forward when we got proposals. But the dated uh proposal for twenty twenty one, everything was the same except that current fee. So all the other information was fine, so they didn't update that. The next one on the spreadsheet is Mercer Group. Mercer is a local firm also able to do the search for us. They're local in Maryland, which is a benefit. So if we need them to come in, for example, to sit in on interviews and things like that, at least they wouldn't be traveling far from out of state. Uh, I do understand from talking to some folks at Chevrolet that they helped with their town administrator search, their public works director search, and also a previous uh police chief search. So they've had some success working with Mercer Group. And you'll see their fee for the project, they held their twenty twenty one price, which was seventeen thousand five hundred. And then they do advise you that there could be additional fees if they have to do advertising, printing, limited travel, again, coming in uh to meet with us, uh not to exceed fifty five hundred dollars. They did also mention that they're willing to provide a discount if we support um both the town administrator search and our public works director search. So just wanted to make the council aware of that. With Novak Consulting Group, their search ranges between twenty seven thousand and thirty thousand and the additional cost for ads and background checks and so forth. Again, that comes outside of that twenty seven to thirty K. Um, they are also local. Slaven Management is based in Georgia. Um, they say their costs are not to exceed twenty four thousand one hundred forty nine dollars. Again, can offer the same services in terms of nationwide search, uh supporting, posting the job, uh meeting with us to get our input similar to the other firms. Uh, and then the final one is Wolf Creek Consulting. They are a minority owned firm, which is great in terms of supporting diversity. Uh, their standard fee is equal to twenty five percent of the candidate's first year compensation, which in this case would be about thirty thousand. So again, on that hire and um, and willing to discount if we had their support for multiple searches. But just looking through the proposals, looking through the services and understanding what we need, I was going to just open it up to see, you know, what thoughts you all had. My initial thought was to proceed with Mercer Group, just because they're on the more reasonable end, not that thirty thousand end of the spectrum, which just seems pretty high to me. But just want to come back to the council and get your input. So council member blind, I want to come to you first.
Again, we, we did talk about it um in twenty twenty one. So at this point, whatever decision you make, um, you better at that than I am. So you can take the lead without.
No, it's a team. We, we all need our
I have
Yeah, and we have tried, right? We work together. We tried. Unfortunately, um we're in the position where we need to hire again. And so just to have an objective process, someone leading while we're doing our day to day jobs and then pulling us in where there is information to report, like here's resumes. You know, we want to have you doing the pre-screens. I think it's going to help all of us, but also keep the process moving. Uh, one of the other things with Mercer is they have a hundred and twenty day window. So by six months from now, that's when we should have our person either starting or confirmed, signed offer letter and getting ready to start. So that way we can start twenty twenty three fresh, fully staffed, hopefully, and you know, ready to hit the ground running. But council member Brown, I want to come to you for your input. We can't hear you, but I'm sure everything you said was wonderful.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Yes, and after having reviewed Excel spreadsheet, I bring out a lot of valid points. And um, I think there are some benefits with having the uh Mercer Group, one being local. Um, and um, with that hundred and twenty day window, that six month period, is it guaranteed? Or if if it, if we don't find anyone within that tick time frame, um, you know, what's, what, what are the offerings? But I, I think that uh, this is you, you all have previously vetted. And with their offerings, I I, and and with their price and with some track record, the history behind them, um, that that we can also reference. Uh, as um, the Mercer Group looks good to me as well, because I just have that other question about the the hundred and um, was hundred and twenty days, that's the six months.
And I think we should definitely, I appreciate your feedback. I made a note and put an asterisk next to it to ask what is, what will they offer us if they don't meet that? So is it a financial discount? Is it, what is it, you know, so they can let us know. But thank you for that input. Council member McBride.
Okay, you lost me for a minute. Um, but yeah, I thought about
You got tired of us and said, I'm done with this. I'm going to get dinner.
My internet went out. Um, but nevertheless, but I liked the Mercer Group also. And I looked at the benefit of the cost. Um. And I've, I've heard about Mercer Group before, so that, that's why it's kind of interesting to me. Um, but I would like to see what they have to offer too.
Great. Thank you for that feedback. And just for the benefit of the residents who are watching, the services or the steps that they are proposing to support the town with for the town administrator recruitment process, our position analysis. So just making sure that the position is defined in terms of the requirements of the position as well as the job qualifications. So they would help us put together a position profile and then do recruitment analysis. And the recruitment will be regional, but it will also be national, which I think could be in our best interest. You never know who's looking to come to this area from another great market with some wonderful skill sets. They would also support resume review. Uh, again, just identifying who those most qualified candidates are that are received. They would support the candidate screening, the background investigations. They would also help with the interview process, so making recommendations to help assist with that process. And then they'll also help us with the salary negotiations and follow up. It says we will facilitate employment and follow up to ensure complete integrity in the process. So again, they're local, they've worked for other municipalities, so I feel like their, their honor is on the line, if you will. They want to do a good job with Bladensburg because they know they're in Maryland and we're connected to so many other municipalities. They're going to want us to say that this was a good experience and they provided a valuable service to us. So it, this is on the seven o'clock meeting agenda under financial business, so that we can do a formal vote in order to move forward on the the proposal that the council um is in favor of. But again, thank you all for weighing in. And council member blunt, like you said, we've been through it before, so we're just so ready. So ready. She shook her head like, yes, enough already. Uh, let's see.
Uh, excuse me, ma'am, just uh real quick. Sorry, just want to make us aware of the time. I think it's like six thirteen, so just helping to be a little time.
Thank you. So the next item is our legislative, I'm sorry, are the legislative priorities for the next legislative session coming up, going from um, starting in January twenty twenty three through April twenty twenty three. And in the packets, you'll find the list of last year's priorities. And I wanted to just open it up to the council to ask for uh recommendations on this year's priorities, uh, understanding some things are not done and may need to stay on the list because we still have work to do. Uh, but for example, with rent stabilization, would you all be open to for putting that down as a legislative priority, um, or um, under our county goals where as Sue Ellen was mentioning before, this is something we take to our county uh elected officials to get their support on. Uh, especially leveraging the power of PG CMA. Sorry, council member.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I don't have a lot to add to it, but yes.
And council member blunt, would that work for you, uh adding it to the list to work through PG CMA?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. And then uh, some of the items on here, such as land use. Again, when it comes to planning and zoning, it's more of an ongoing thing that we just have to continue to work for, work through, especially with the county map amendment that was recently approved without our request, um particularly regarding the major piece of land on Annapolis Road. Um, but the small cell legislation um has the died down in terms of the controversy, or I shouldn't even say controversy, but in terms of the noise that you're hearing. Uh, about four years ago, it was a hot topic because the concern was that they would start putting up the uh infrastructure in our communities without having to come to us for any sort of um permitting. They would just go straight to the county for that. And you'd see these large five G, if not towers, boxes that look like cabinets or closets throughout your community. And they were not very attractive in some cases. Um, but I I noticed that five G is becoming more and more talked about in terms of the retail sector. So I don't know that this has completely gone away, but just want to mention, I'm not hearing as much. You all may be hearing more about it. Uh, so if you want to keep that on, that that works as well. And with the dredging of the river, again, another ongoing thing for about the last fifteen years. And think we definitely should take advantage of the elections uh outcome and really push for some federal dollars on that. Uh, call a bus is still on here, just asking the county to expand and improve that service. And we just have to keep asking until they do it. Pushing um, the wayfinding signage, working with uh park and planning to identify funding to really distinguish our community so that people know they're, they're here. There's a sense of place. And it's clear what the historic attractions are. So um, that is under county. Under state legislation, the new town hall still remains. We've got work to do. We've got some money, but uh, hopefully, once the consultant is on board and we start moving forward, we um can start moving on that project. But we'll most likely have to go back for additional funding. Boswick House, same situation with that. Um, law enforcement bill of rights can come off, given the sweeping legislation from the last session. Um, unless unless there's a desire from the council to really push for a local accountability boards. Right now, it's with the county, which is problematic for municipalities who have their own police departments. So what is the pleasure of the council? Chief, any feedback? Um, because I know you've been watching the the aftermath of the legislation passing.
Uh, good afternoon, ma'am. And council colleagues. Uh, yes, ma'am, I've been, you know, on top of the uh new legislation and we're moving forward, especially working with our uh colleagues around the county. And there's, there are a lot of uh new legislating that have been put forth that really the uh municipalities and the county and the state aren't really uh prepared for, because this was a uh quick turnaround and the, the accountability study came out. And the, and the laws changed, but realistically, um, no one was really prepared on how these things would take place and what they would really look like within respective municipalities. And I do know, as you stated, most of the municipalities have allowed the county to um, hold the accountability board, because they just don't have the resources in a bandwidth to, to uh withstand it.
And so chief, from your perspective, would that be in our best interest, at least for now, while things are transitioning to see how this goes? Before we make a hard stance that, no, we need to have our own uh, police accountability board right here, that's based on residents in our community, sitting on there with, you know, someone in leadership like yourself or um, someone else in the command staff.
Well, it's always uh advantageous for the uh local jurisdiction to handle their own, because who knows the community, who knows the officer better than the community we serve. Uh, so with that being said, I would say, yes, um, we should look forward to doing our own accountability board, because we are Bladensburg and we know Bladensburg. We know our residents and our residents know our officers. So to be transparent and and have a independent outside entity look at us, um, they can be unbiased, uh, they should be unbiased, but they really don't know the history of Bladensburg officers and Bladensburg residents. And I think that we, since we are Bladensburg, we should handle our own affairs as opposed to sending them out. I think that we have competent people in the in town that can serve as, uh, accountability representatives. And also look at things from different global lenses and come up with a fair and impartial decision on the accountability of our police officers.
Thank you for that, chief. So with that in mind, would the council be okay leaving on there advocating for municipalities to establish their own, uh, police accountability boards? Okay. Okay. Councilmember Brown.
Thanks, mayor. Thanks, chief. Um, yeah, I I mean, I think I think so. And but then I I also think that maybe there's still some type of collaboration or connection with the county. I get, uh, police accountability board as well, so that, you know, so that, you know, we because because the, um, the the county police do come into into the municipalities.
So maybe having a member, uh, serve on it, is that what you're thinking, councilmember?
On the, on the county one, but definitely the municipalities having their own as well.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Councilmember McBride, oh, I think her internet might have dropped again. Okay, so we'll keep moving right along so we can get through the rest of the items. But again, just wanted to bring these before the council and see if there were any modifications that we need to change. And then we can vote on the priorities in the next meeting. And again, I did note for the PG CMA priorities that we really want to advocate for the rental stabilization as a county. Not just going alone, um, for Bladensburg, especially as Mrs. Ferguson was talking about towns being sued. We, we don't, yeah, I saw Mrs., uh, councilmember Blunt's face. I'm like, yeah, that was she said. So the next item is really quick. Um, the county executive has been doing her Growing Green with Pride events annually. And the next one, usually, I'm sorry, one is in the spring, one is in the fall. So the next date that's been identified is October fifteenth. It's a Saturday. And the timeframe, I believe, is nine till about noon. Um, and so wanted to just support that effort and ask if the council would be in favor of just working together to get students involved in coming out, cleaning up, hopefully engage our green team and coming out and, um, identifying a site in Ward one and a site in Ward two for the cleanup. Um, that would be one ask. And then in our last meeting, as we were talking about storm water management, uh, one of the council members brought up, may have been councilmember Rowell, about video recording the installation of the, um, the rain barrels. And so as a green effort on that particular day when we're doing Growing Green with Pride, we could even have the, um, organization that came out this summer for our big effort at, uh, Boswick House install the last of the rain barrels that were ordered for that property. And we just record that as a tutorial. So we can post that. We're doing education. We've got the cleanups going on and there's a lot happening to make Bladensburg Growing Green with Pride. But open to other ideas. I mean, if the seniors want to come out, councilmember Blunt, they've helped before. Um, I won't say their names, but along the woods, uh, next to Emerson House. Some of my buddies over there, we were pulling all kinds of things out of those woods, trying to clean it up and make it pretty as, uh, kids walk to school every day. So the seniors will help if you ask.
A question, you know, um, sixty eleven where all that trash is. Will we, will we be able to go onto that property just to, or even recruit some people out of that building just to clean that area up as well?
That's a good idea. Yeah. Um, I can reach out and see if they would be interested in partnering with us. We can help, but because it's private, we would definitely want residents from the building out there working with us. And I don't think it would take very long. So we could do that and do our usual fifty seventh, um, main corridor cleanup. So that's at sixty eleven Emerson.
And you mean actually, actually going down in those woods?
Oh, you mean behind it?
No, I'm talking about here.
Oh, yeah, we've done it. We've done it. I'm not going to tell you all the things we pulled out on the meeting, but I'll tell you separately. Yes, we, we loaded up a truck. So
Yes.
It's frustrating because I just don't understand why you can't put those things in the trash. It's your neighborhood. You should take pride in it. And we will continue to try. So, yeah, okay, so I'll follow up on that, councilmember. And then the next item is the resilience hub. Mr. Charnovich, I want to turn it over to you for this one.
Uh, thank you, mayor and council, everyone this evening. So I had the opportunity recently, the last week or two, to join a, uh, a call with the mayor. Uh, some, some Prince George's County representatives, uh, and and as well as the, uh, town of Sheverly. Um, regarding, uh, the concept of resilience hubs and for everyone on the call. In essence, what a resilience hub is, it is kind of a, a location that is used in in case of an emergency, emergency situation. Uh, it can be used in a variety of different ways, whether it's food support, uh, clean water, uh, there's clean energy. There's a heating station, uh, you know, electric station to charge essential devices or or essential medicines. Uh, there's a lot of different concepts as far as what, um, uh, what it can be used for. Now, the, uh, my understanding, the purpose of the call, initial call kickoff call we were on with with Sheverly is that the, uh, Prince George's County, uh, representatives are seeking some, uh, uh, local government, uh, support in working to get, uh, grant funding. Um, I think it's through FEMA and or MEMA uh, to establish these, uh, resilience hubs. And they're looking, without getting too far into the weeds, they're looking at different, uh, aspects of the region, uh, in 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 all of Prince George's County to try and set up these hubs that can help the entire region, including Bladensburg. Uh, but it would also help, uh, many different, uh, areas within the region. And they asked us to think through some, uh, some areas within Bladensburg that may be good, uh, good options, uh, to, uh, to set up a resilience, what these resilience hubs. And I think our, one of our next steps, mayor, is that we are going to also chat with Sheverly about this in a separate meeting. Um, but that is kind of the concept, is that they're seeking local, local government support to to help apply, uh, for this grant from MEMA. It was, I guess, having some, some government support would give that them leverage to have, uh, a greater opportunity to get funding to help this for for this, for this service, which would help the, help the entire region. That's sound about right, mayor?
It does. And the beauty of it is really this is a pilot. So the county hasn't done this program before. And so it is a privilege that they came to Bladensburg and Sheverly to just say it or ask if this is something we'd be interested in exploring with them. Uh, there were some considerations when they looked at communities to consider. And so they looked at, um, those that are most impacted. In terms of when devastation does happen, so income demographics and those, um, kind of variables definitely played a role here. And thinking back to September twentieth, had we already established a resiliency hub when residents needed to be evacuated from their homes, let's say we partnered with Bladensburg Community Center for the Bladensburg Hub. We would have already established, uh, volunteers who come to support the people there. Uh, there may be situations where folks had to grab magic medication. So we would have the means for them to store their medication while the emergency situation flooding or whatever the case may be. It could have been a tornado, let's say, are, um, being resolved. Uh, it has, um, the ability to have a system developed and we get to formulate that. Or if we get our cert team going, this, this is where the cert team, the community emergency response team would be critical. Uh, because we'd have the volunteers identified, our plan for providing food to those impacted, immediate resources. And then if needed, the relationship with, let's say, Red Cross, if they need overnight accommodations or something like that. And the idea is that, again, we partner with Sheverly, but some of the unincorporated areas near us. So that we may be in a situation where because of an emergency, we may get residents who are in the unincorporated area, which is literally right across this Annapolis Road, right across the street. But they're impacted, they're between Bladensburg and Sheverly, therefore they're in our hub. So they would be able to come to either Sheverly or Bladensburg, again, just throwing out the example of the community center to get support. And so again, it's not asking us for money out of pocket. It's just, um, OEM, the Office of Emergency Response for the county was asking if this is something we'd be interested in. And so wanted to bring it up to everyone here, just because I'm really concerned with global warming and climate change. The weather is getting more and more severe. These so-called one in a hundred year storms seem to be happening four and five times a year. And so just thinking if we can get the funding from either federal government through FEMA or Maryland government through MEMA to really get a robust program together, it could really help shore up, you know, our response. So we're not just relying on code enforcement and the police department to help evacuate people, but we don't have any resources for them beyond that. So just wanted to, you know, it, put the idea out there for your, uh, feedback. And then if everyone's on board, um, Rich and I will then follow up with Sheverly and you all are welcome. You know, even if we have to figure out how to do this, because I want to make sure we have broad support from the council so that as we're building our plan, we really, we take everyone's input in terms of building the right resources and making it as robust as possible. So any comments or questions from the council? Again, not asking for money, not asking for money. Not asking for money.
Really, I really love that because I often think if something would happen to these seniors, where are they going to go? So yes, um, for that. And if I can be a part of it, um, just speaking in the seniors, please allow me to work with that. With the seniors.
Thank you. That's fantastic. Councilmember Rowell, I see your hand and welcome.
Thank you. Congress is on us right now. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry, appropriation time. But, um, I think this is excellent, especially for those that are disabled that live in Ward. Well, uh, Ward one disabled, um, with, you know, in the homes, like in the event of something. It's going, I mean, for individuals that are disabled, it's going to be hard for them to be, their family just to evacuate them out. Um, so I definitely think that that this would be great. Not that Ward two doesn't have any disabled individuals, but
We get it. We get it. Word one councilmember, we got you. And now to our other word one councilmember who's probably going to echo.
Hello, 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 hello. Chief, you're not laughing.
I'm good, I'm good.
You didn't like my hello.
I did, I did. I thought it was two, two devices open.
Yeah, I, you know, someone from, um, firsthand experience of experiencing the microverse here in Bladensburg in twenty twelve. I, I, I think it sounds great, even though it's going to be a pilot and just would love to hear a little bit more about it. And, um, you know, over, you know, in terms of the level of effort, uh, with overseeing the grant and those other types of details. But, uh, the normal stuff, but otherwise, yeah, I think it's, uh, sounds like something, uh, really, really great.
Thank you for that reminder and feedback, councilmember Brown, because I recall at that time you all had to use the Bladensburg High School for shelter for those impacted by that storm. And calls were being made, you know, in that.
It was support towns.
Sorry, that's right. And that's kind of what stuck in my head is really getting ahead of that. So we're not in the moment seeking, okay, where can we get them? Councilmember Brown, can you call Bladensburg Elementary? Councilmember Blunt, can you call the high school? You know, just really having established locations and identified for various needs. So if you have pets, maybe we have to ha- take you to town hall. And then maybe if you have need wheelchair access, perhaps it's the community center because it's on one level and you can be willed in. And we, you know, so just to really think through and learn from that experience in particular, because that that microburst was something else, you know, uh, I think there's a lot of lessons learned that we can pull from there and plan, you know, for the future.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for that feedback and the reminder about that storm. Can not forget that. Um, and so with the next item on tonight's agenda, I shared with you all um, a proposal for, um, ARPA Food Assistance, a project that, uh, potentially could be done with some of our, uh, nonprofit partners in the community. And so the, the backstory is, uh, Now Foundation, one of the founders reached out to me to ask if we might be interested in a turkey drive. And I feel like we should work smarter, not harder. And so Victory Gray Center for probably going back to twenty fifteen, when they first started at Bladensburg High School, has annually done a Thanksgiving drive to help really the port towns. They started doing it primarily in Bladensburg. And then about two years ago, I think they shifted to Edmiston. And so they served last year, I think it was about six to seven hundred families from the Edmiston site. And so in thinking about the, the request from Now Foundation, I was thinking, well, I wonder if VGC, since they have a good infrastructure, they've got the vendors lined up, um, if they would partner so we could do a Bladensburg location like we used to at the high school. And then they do the other distribution in Edmiston, because of course, we don't want to take away from our port towns, uh, sister city. And so in talking with VGC, they indicated that they would be willing to work with us. And so again, help do the shopping, store the, um, items, so we wouldn't have town hall bogged down with all these boxes of rice and beans and those kinds of things. Um, they'll take care of that and store them until the morning of the food drive, which they're proposing for Saturday, November nineteenth. So the Saturday before Thanksgiving. And what they're suggesting is at least by seven AM that morning, they would have a truck come to Bladensburg, drop off the turkeys. All the items that are listed on the proposal, which are for the benefit of the public, stuffing, mashed potatoes, canned gravy, rice, two cans of black beans, two cans of green beans, uh, two boxes, I'm sorry, cans of corn, jiffy stuffing, two boxes, cake mix, cranberry sauce, and then of course, the turkeys. So they would drop everything off and we'd have our volunteers there in the cafeteria, let's say, at the high school, packing the boxes is how we normally do it. And then when cars pull up, you drop in a turkey, you drop in their basket with all the additional items and they go on their way. And so the principal of Bladensburg High School did let me know today that if this is something that we want to move forward with, she's happy to host us, happy to help us get students to volunteer who need community service hours. So we'd have lots of manpower. We would need some traffic support, of course, um, just with lining the cars up in the parking lot and getting them out quickly. Um, but the other thing that they would need is the financial support, because obviously donations are a little tight, given inflation and everything else. And so, um, I wanted to just bring this up for the council to consider supporting it financially through the ARPA funding. Given we've, uh, set aside twenty thousand dollars for food assistance. And when we talked about this topic previously, as we were thinking through the allocations, we were saying it makes sense to just do this smart, not harder. And so find organizations that are able to partner with us and kind of take on some of the heavy lifting as we try to do food assistance, because we know what it's like with the food distributions. We went through that for over a year. Every, what was it, Thursday, Friday, getting the volunteers, the police department and so forth. And so having nonprofit organization who has that structure in place to help support just will make it flow so much smoother. So again, wanted to get your feedback, um, on this, uh, particular item. Councilmember Rowell, I, your hand is like waving. I was like, wait a minute. Okay, I see you. Sorry. I was like, maybe she's fixing her hair. I don't know. It was like off.
I was fixing it, but I also wanted to, um, I'm very interested. I think this is good. Um, but I, I, I was thinking that, um, whoever's going to be doing the handling, I think it would be only fair for an administrative costs that we attach on. I don't know if it's both organizations or just one or, but, you know, they have for gas to go pick up the items for, um, trucks if they have to. for gas to go pick up the items, for trucks, if they have to, you know, transport things. I don't know if they pay their volunteers or workers a stipend. Oftentimes, these 501(c)(3) and (c)(4) organizations, you know, they are giving back to the community, but, you know, they, I would like to see some type of administrative fee or something that we can come up with. I don't know what the standard is, but that's the only addition I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback, Councilmember Rowell. And I think that's an important consideration, because as we were talking, they did mention that they would have to rent the box trucks to keep everything in, to, you know, shop, take it to their site where they store it, and then on the actual days, load that up and bring it to the communities. And they anticipated by doing two sites this year, the rental fees would be for Bladensburg and Edmiston. But I didn't want to bog you guys down with that. I was like, I'll help them get donations from elsewhere if we can do this. But I mean, if the council is open to it, it makes their lives easier to just say the administrative fee for the gas, to help offset the cost of renting the $600 refrigerator truck. If that's the case, it could very well be that by November it's so cold that the turkeys will maintain in the truck and you may not, maybe they can just do the regular, you know, $150 rental. But I think you're right, it would definitely help, because I feel bad having them go in the pocket. I know they don't pay the volunteers, but just doing the additional things like the truck rentals, the gas when they do the shopping and the bags to purchase, you know, or boxes to put the sides in. So open it up. I know Councilmember Blunt, you do a lot with nonprofits. What do you think would make sense for something like an administrative fee?
Yes, I agree with that. I do agree with that. But, but I did have one question, and I know the senior's going to be in that line, because they went over to Emerson and they wasn't supposed to, but I can't stop them. Instead of turkeys, can, you know, I don't think a senior should have a big turkey. I just don't. I think they should set aside for seniors a small chicken, because a turkey would be too much and they already get a lot of donations from the brown bags. And I'm speaking of my seniors, Parkview and Newton Green, as I've helped them every year with the food. So if you all can sit aside or work with someone there that can, how many seniors will be served in the building and only give them turkey, I mean chickens instead of turkeys?
Gotcha. So I'm just making a note about that, or someone noted Cornish hands, but I know what you mean, just a smaller amount that wouldn't be quite so large.
Not a Cornish hand, though. That's too small. A chicken.
No, I just thought that Cornish hand, isn't that a turkey? Like, isn't that the same thing?
No.
Sorry. I don't know my animals.
It's a baby.
Little teeny one, little teeny tiny.
Oh, no, 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 not that. I'm not.
Okay, not that small.
But a chicken, just a whole chicken.
Yep. And then also, I will say, the other thing I appreciate about VGC is they allow us to spoil the seniors, because they'll allow us to say, okay, we're going to pick up X number and deliver them to Emerson or Parkview or Newton Green. So the seniors, if they so choose, they can go and line up. Some of them like to do that just to get out, but for those who can't, we're able to deliver it straight to their buildings and they're, you know, they're accustomed to that. So I just appreciate that they're flexible, but this, uh, this item will be on.
What about some of our residents who can't get out? I mean, like I said, I mean, we take care of the seniors, but we're here to take care of everybody.
And that would be something. Yeah, if we could announce it in our weekly blast and say, if you can't pick it up, please contact town hall and just get a list. I can deliver them. That's not a problem. You know, because some people are in the houses or maybe they're in Autumn Woods or Quincy Village, you know. We can definitely accommodate, yeah, or maybe they're.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, because also, yeah, so for a resident, especially who may be in a wheelchair, I wouldn't want them to call Metro Access just to bring them, you know, over here. I'd much rather they just call us, we get it, and we just drop it to them. Sometimes chief will even have the guys and ladies from the PD helping to make the delivery. So we, yes, we will look out for our residents.
And it's important also, because seniors try to get two and three. So some type of order dealing with seniors, because if not.
Councilmember, you're not supposed to be telling on your seniors. You're just putting them on.
I still have a turkey in that freezer in there. So no, chicken and not 50 people, but maybe 25 per building, because I can always make sure if I have 100 people, I can get that.
And I will just say, I remember they did that one year and we got told off. How dare you not give me a turkey when people in the line?
That was our, we all got told off. Councilmember Blunt got told off, too.
Yeah, so.
You're not doing that again.
Yeah, if I have to buy them 25 chickens, I'll just pay for that out of my pocket, but I don't want to mix it, because.
Establish the rules. Establish the rules. I can enforce, I can enforce the rules.
Not by my great grandma.
But you don't get one at all.
Well, on that note, we are at the end of the agenda, so I want to give you guys a break in between now and the next meeting. So we, again, are at the end. I want to thank everybody for the great discussion tonight and will now call for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Brown, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Rowell. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of I.
I.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We're adjourned.